Including up. Mr. Bailey, is that you, sir? Hello? Who's on the line? Jim?
I think he was there and then we lost him.
We're experiencing technical difficulties at this time. Please stay with us. So in the interest of time, I'm going to go ahead and open our regular session in oh two. Please silence and shut off your cell phones. Enjoy this in the pledge. Mr. Williams, would you please?
I live at the U.S. due to the flag of the United States of America. And here the Republic of which stands now in effect under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey, you've joined us.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt the pledge of allegiance.
No, you're fine. So we just got going. So to go over our agenda additions, we have consideration of forming an advisory committee that we will take under consideration today. There's not, have not received information, but we also have Jim here, Strong, that would like to be on the agenda as an addition, correct?
Correct.
So any other additions? There is a couple of deletions from yesterday. We went ahead, we pointed to college advisory board through the application process, two people, the health advisory board, one person and the wolf depredation compensation person. So those are deleted as actual statements yesterday. Any other additions, deletions, corrections?
No, that's sounds good.
Okay, so first item is public comment. Public comments, anything other than on the agenda? If there's no public comment, then we will move on to Mr. Strong. Do you have supporting material? I'm sorry that it's not on our agenda.
Oh, I've got a couple of copies I can hand to you this time. You sit here and sit for... Yes. So, if anybody can hear me, I'll stand. Live in Christmas Valley, know most of you, also much of the audience. I wanted to repeat, reiterate a request that I made to y'all at the email at the beginning of the month. Beginning of October before that meeting. I'd like the board to consider two ideas, two requests that I have. And of course, I'd like the board to agree with me and take action on it, but let's start with the easy part first. The first one, I think, is pretty simple. Back in the middle of March, I think it was March 15th, this board declared a countywide state of emergency regarding COVID. That was eight months ago. It was very early on in the process of what I, you know, what I call the process of COVID. We were hearing things about how many body bags the county would need, that the risk that hospital space would be overrun or overworked or overoccupied and so on. So I understand the reason back in March for that declaration. I think eight months later, through both the work of commissioners and the work and efforts of the community in all of Lake County, I think it's pretty easy to realize there was no state of emergency regarding COVID here, as we all sit here today. I know that. And that's why I'm asking that we rescind it, if you guys rescind it. I know that some pushback might come in the form of, well, there may be a reluctance because we don't want to upset the apple cart with our relationship with various state agencies and perhaps risk losing the potential COVID dollars that may still be coming in. My response to that is every emergency has an ending point. For example, if there's a fire around Paisley or somewhere else in the county, eventually the fire gets put out and the emergency that was declared at the onset of it, when it seemed to be risky, fades away. And once the fire is put out, people will return to their homes, property damage and stuff is assessed, then the declaration goes away. It does not prevent the future obtaining or receiving of dollars funneling down from the feds and the state to be, to reimburse the county for the expenses used to fight the fire. Likewise, if there's a flood, eventually floodwater is received, people return to their homes, damages is assessed, and the emergency is over with. The emergency that was declared maybe at the initial stage of a flood. It doesn't prevent dollars still coming into that local county or municipality to recoup costs that were spent during that emergency. And that's the philosophy I would use here. I know that in my part of the county, we had a little onset of a half dozen or so, maybe more COVID cases last week, week and a half ago. They have not stressed any resources of Lake County. No Lake County hospitalizations resulted because of it. There's no burden on any of the ancillary equipment used to pre-COVID. And so while some people's eyebrows in North Lake County got raised during the past week or so, there's no emergency. So, and if by a slim chance, federal or state agencies decide to reduce or turn off the tap of funds coming down because they're getting mad or agitated, that Lake County no longer sees itself as being an emergency, and I'm only talking Lake County here, then that's why you have state reps. To go up to the State House and figuratively slap around the people up there who are trying to cut off that tap of funds. The second thing, I think this is an easy get. I think if everybody sits back and looks at it objectively, even with the concerns that you might have that I've anticipated, or maybe there's other concerns that I haven't anticipated. I'd be happy to address and respond to those the best I could, but I think this is an easy get. My second issue that I'd like to see, I understand it's going to be a little bit tougher to swallow for you guys as elected officials, but again, I remind you, you're all elected officials. And that is that I would think it instrumental for, again, Lake County Board of Commissioners, adopt the resolution condemning OSHA for their inspection enforcement and in some cases, what seems to be harassment of our local businesses. To put it flatly, they're victimizing our businesses. Nobody should be allowed to do that. I don't care what their goal is, I don't care what their authority is, and I don't care at what level of government it comes from. That should be stopped. I'm not asking for an or else resolution, stop this or else, OSHA. I'm asking for just a declarative statement in the form of a county resolution to quit victimizing our businesses. If the three of you or two of you or whoever of you authors, you know, is convinced to offer such a resolution into a draft at least, and then maybe for, and then for future passage, you guys can come up with the words. If you want to ask me my suggestions, maybe I can create something. But again, it's not an or else, it's simply a declarative statement where you three, the elected officials of this county, can go on record in a document in the form of this resolution that lets OSHA know we as a county aren't happy with you. Now, I am not denying that there is a use for OSHA, a legitimate use. I like people who work at lumber mills to come home every day with 10 fingers and 10 toes. I like people who are working in job sites not to be exposed to hazardous chemicals. And I'm not even addressing the mask mandate, however people may feel about that. I am just talking about letting OSHA know as a state agency that this county is, for lack of a better word, condemns what they've been doing. I can give you some examples of, if you like, I can give you some examples. I've got a few minutes left. OSHA onsite inspection teams should not be talking hypothetically to businesses or business employees or their owners about what they think this, a fine might be that might be generated. That's not the inspection team's job. Inspection team's job is to simply inspect, ask some questions, write a report, send it up the chain at OSHA and Salem or an enforcement committee, or perhaps even the enforcement office, or an enforcement committee decides what action of any should be taken. That is not for a field level inspector to hypothesize about with the victim business owner out of their pay grade. The second thing that OSHA's been doing with particularly one business in Christmas Valley, on Christmas Valley Highway, is they may repeat your phone calls trying to recontact a couple of employees. And I'm talking about Chevron. They already had conversations during their initial inspection with those employees. There is absolutely, if they've got a case, there is absolutely no need for them to try to recontact one or two employees. Those two employees are unwilling and have yet to return their calls. That's fine. That's their entire right. Chevron's a little bit different because they've got a corporate office that can deal with the state, and that's all OSHA should be dealing with at corporate level with fast break. They shouldn't even be worrying about frontline employees. I'm aware of two businesses on the highway in Christmas Valley where the initial complaint process started by email notification from OSHA, as is proper. There's some drop dead days contained in that, get to us back by this day or time, or just, you know, within five days, how you respond to this complaint, what you've taken, if in fact it's legit, what actions you take to cooperate with the states and the health department's mandates regarding COVID and so on and so forth. Those timelines were met by those victim businesses, the two I'm speaking to above specifically. Those timelines were met. Two weeks later, both those businesses received complaint resolution letters from OSHA. We're satisfied with your response. We're satisfied with what you all are doing. We consider this issue closed, and then of course, the caveat, unless we get further complaints, understandable. Three weeks after receiving those resolution letters, if you call OSHA, particularly if you talk to the public affairs officer at Salem office, he'll pull that case up on his database, still shows open. Now, I know there's a backlog, but three to four weeks backlog, when a victim business owner has already been given a resolution letter, says this matter is resolved from our standpoint, there should be no open status on it. And I don't know if it's deliberate. I don't know if it's from a workload backlog. I suspect it's just a tactic they're using to kind of grind their feet before officially notifying victim businesses that they've been, that that complaint's been resolved. So that in the event, especially in our case in Christmas Valley, where we have one individual who's decided to make this life's mission to target businesses with complaints, not just one, but multiple complaints, to keep having OSHA come back in there so that that person should feel some sort of superhero satisfaction or whatever motivation is. I have no idea what this guy's thinking. OSHA recognizes that. They see the complaint insane when they're not left as anonymous. They keep them confidential because that's mandated by their guidelines and also by state law. But they know that one person's targeting six or seven or eight businesses in a community of about 1,000 people, and they seem unwilling to or unable to take that into consideration throughout the decision-making process. That is a reason, to me, another reason that you guys should adopt the resolution on that. That's about it. I used up my 10, 15 minutes. Any questions that I could hope I can answer?
I'm having a personal phone call with you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I could mention that. I know that was appropriate to mention. Brad called me and we had about an hour long conversation last week, which I think was productive. I got to hear some of his detailed views. He got to hear certainly mine. You sent me an email very soon after I sent the email to Melanie, I guess, and all of you at the beginning of the month, and you agreed with every point I had, Mark. So, I mean, I guess I'm not happy. I'm not satisfied, but I understand you guys have responded at least partially. I'm not asking you to make a decision here either. What I'm asking you is consider what I've said, consider your own concerns, and perhaps be prepared to maybe make a decision by the next board meeting, Board of Commissioners meeting, which I believe is the third week of this month. Am I correct? Yeah, I am not looking for you to drop what you're doing and and come up with a decision yes or no now. I'm sure that as a board, you will end up, you know, communicating with me and the others in Christmas Valley who are also interested about, about what your decision is. What I have, what I mentioned, supportive documents, just to show you I'm not alone in this. In a period, a three and a half hour period on Monday, I was able to gather signatures from area residents, that being former October Lake Christmas Valley. Just with this under a statement that they support the notion of rescinding the countywide state of emergency. I have, I can give you a couple, that'd be the original. You're welcome to that. And then here's just a photocopy of that.
Thank you.
And you'll see there's about, on this, on that.
Yeah, we have to make copies.
Okay, that's why I gave the original. You've probably got about upwards of 39 or 40 signatures on that. The other signature sheet that I also gained, you know, obtained in about three, say three and a half hours.
But that's official.
Is a group of individuals, again, former October Lake, mostly Christmas Valley, that agree with the notion of a countywide resolution condemning OSHA's actions. Again, here's the original. And here's a photocopy. This one had a few more signatures, about, let's think, oh, about 44. 52, 44. So those folks in that three and a half hours that I had conversations with people throughout Christmas Valley agree that I could be the servant to deliver the message. That's one.
So Jim?
Yes, sir.
You... I'm not saying I disagree with you, buddy.
Right.
What would the benefit be? What is your caveat? What are you thinking is the next step after we declare that Lake County is not in a state of emergency? How would that benefit us?
Well, as a body, it's going to benefit you from the standpoint of the perception of what I believe is the majority of Lake County residents, certainly the majority of North County residents, that as an elected body, you guys are listening to folks, the constituents, the voters. I think in a bigger picture, you will probably see some of the other eastern Oregon counties take up such an initiative on their own, if in fact there are others that are still under a state of emergency as well. I think this can promote discussion. I mean, what you did four months ago, you know, with other county reps, I thought that was a good step, and it just seemed, from a public perspective, it seemed to fade away. But I was cheering for them and everybody else who showed up.
I'll take this, I'll know.
Well, the fact that it took place is the positive I take out of it. So regardless of whether what was in the paper or not, I don't care. But to answer your question, I just think it's a good step forward for, in the eyes of most of your constituents, in the eyes of the county and the whole. And you're not disputing or contending the fact of whatever the state opinion is regarding the state level. All you're doing is saying, here in Lake County, where we all live and work, and we have our Lake Health District Hospital, and we have all the other services that are, that are connected to health and welfare, we don't see an emergency. We've managed it for the last eight months, and we all believe we can manage it in the future. And here's the other thing, you've got an out on this. You can declare, rescind your state of emergency declaration. If the crap hits the fan in another month, you declare another one. It's that simple, really. It's not complicated when you're... I think you're concerned that you might tick off some people at a higher level throughout state government, and they might, like I said, turn off or diminish the tap of funds coming to you. I could see why you'd be concerned, but I also, from my perspective, don't see that happen. Brad presented a good question to me last week on the phone, which was, and this has more to do with, I hate mixing apples and oranges on issues, but it's a 112 mile drive for me, so I'm combining them. Forgive me for that. But Brad mentioned to me last week that, you know, one concern would be if we adopt a county resolution to condemn OSHA, isn't there a possibility, and I think you feel there might be more than a slight possibility, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but there's at least a possibility that OSHA might get mad and come down here harder. So what? That is, how are they going to come down harder? They're going to bring more inspectors in? Are they going to somehow increase fines through their enforcement committee that actually sits in a powwow and reaches consensus about those types of decisions? What are they going to do that they're not already doing already? They're victimizing businesses. How many employees you got currently?
Six.
Plus shape or including?
Including.
So you're, they're victimizing a business with six employees, none of which, you know, they're not all there at the same time. They provide a valuable service. Yeah, there's another feed hardware store in town, but they, there's some things that only Kerness carries, and then there's some things that only Santa's carries. Are they going to go back there again? So what? It's time that, I think, as a county, because all of you men have the character to do this, believe me. I don't know you well. I've only been in this county for two years, but you've all got the character and strength to do this. It's just a matter of pushing you over that line. That's why I'm here. It's time for this county, as a county only, to say, we're fed up, and so we're going to adopt the resolution that conveys that, but does it diplomatically, of course, and any political concerns you might have, that's fine too. And if OSHA comes in here and somehow effectuates what you might fear, harder, hardline enforcement, that's when you call up Vicki Breeze-Iverson, that's when you call up, that's when you call up whatever, a part of the county's by a different State House rep, I get it. That's when you call up, you say, go up to their State House and slap these people around figuratively. Because that's what their job is. Now, I know that state reps, because I see their open letters condemning OSHA to the governor's office and yada, yada, yada over the, you know, on Facebook, that's great, but it's not having an effect. It makes us feel good as a county that our state rep might be in our corner, or appears to be in our corner, but it has absolutely no effect. This would have, I think, the effect of, what do you want to know? Slap him better, turn. Any other questions?
For me? I have no questions.
Okay, and like I said, I'm not looking for you to, let's have a vote, yeah, we agree with him, or no, we do not agree with him, whatever. Work it out. You guys amongst yourselves, work it out to where you can feel comfortable doing this, either of these actions. Both optimistically, for me, both of you.
Like I said, Jim, I don't disagree with you at all. I think OSHA, going back on that subject, has extreme overreach and harassment on the people. To be real honest, I'm pissed, and so I don't know if declaration or
Resolution.
Resolution, whatever you want to call it, will do anything other than voice our opinion. I don't know if there's any legal...
It won't have, I'm not looking for something that has either or. I'm not looking for something that involves any kind of a mandate from the county of Lakeview to OSHA or anything.
Thing is, is that, you know, unfortunately, they they have been given some power and they are using it. And I don't know if it's any more than just a statement.
Yes, I agree.
I'm totally fine with the statement. We'll check on what our legal ramifications are doing either.
Let me ask you this. To interrupt you, I apologize, but let me ask you this. You drove a hundred and some... No, I was going to say I'm sorry. I see other people have issues too, if they might bring forth. If that's the case, let's talk about the rescension of the declaration of emergency. If the state's declaration of emergency is fine, why should the county even declare? Now, I think the answer is, why should each county declare one? I think the answer is, well, we want to open the door for when the relief dollars start coming in. Is that a correct assumption on my part?
To be honest.
Seriously.
We declared our emergency before the state actually did.
But why, I guess?
That was to prepare a way for funding, to kind of gather the troops so we can line stuff out and work with the hospital. Because I don't remember the day that it started, but I met with Judy, who's our director, public health director. We met with the hospital staff. I called North Lake's clinic, and I called Carl Schumway, because I didn't have North Lake's number
Right.
to let them know we're declaring an emergency. Because at the time, we were told...
There was a doom and gloom prospect over...
At the time, it was expected to have 220 deaths of people over the age of seven.
I remember somebody down here, I don't remember who it was, and I think they're a physician or they used to be, I remember somebody's quote made the press, you better get 131 body bags ready, or was it 231? I don't know. But I understand that was, so, and I, like I said, I don't object to the reasons for doing it. It's been eight months. No hospitalizations, no fatalities, no perceivable shortage of the ancillary equipment and respirators and all the other stuff that bigger agencies might have experienced with, or bigger municipalities, but not here in Lakeview. Not in Lake County. So why do it? To make that declarative statement. And I think that the next time you all converse, if you were to do this, this rescension of the emergency declaration, I think the next time you all confer with your counterparts in other eastern Oregon counties, you might be getting questions like, well, how did you do that? Or why? Or we support you? Or we want to kind of do that too. I think you're getting more of that than you're, oh gosh, you guys are upsetting the apple cart. You've done it now. I don't think you're going to get that. And Mark, you've been consistent in that, in your emotion of, I'm pissed off. I know that. I, I think I intentionally did that when we were out at Fort Rock, just by bringing up COVID, the word, and I could see, but that's good. I like that. But I want you to do something now. Maybe for, if no other reason, if you guys are pissed off, one, two, or all three, maybe this will alleviate some of that. I don't know.
So I, I have to...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
DMZ, you acknowledged that we had a conversation in just one part of our conversation. So as I told you very clearly, we represent a lot of community partners. And to make a political statement for a political view on rescinding this declaration of emergency can impact our community partners, our school major, or the public health authority, our hospital, North Lake, and all of our community partners that have a part in receiving or possibly receiving benefits under the emergency declaration. You make good examples about emergency declarations. We ask for a drought declaration. It goes on until the drought's over. This emergency declaration is during a pandemic. Is the pandemic over? In your views, maybe. Are you a professional in that field?
No, and you know what? Pandemic is a global view, and I appreciate that.
You can argue both sides of it, is what I'm telling you.
Right.
We sitting here as a board of commissioners represent multiple community partners that this can positively or adversely affect. We represent, on the OSHA side of it, just like I said, we represent many, many businesses and municipalities and others that that can affect. So none of this, as far as I'm concerned, is something you take lightly.
Right.
Or that you just do it for a political move to say, we're making a statement, state of Oregon. Now, we've, we've built a lot of partnerships with state agencies that come back to our community, and those are very hard to build those relationships. So that's the political side of me. We work very hard on that. But we have to, you have to acknowledge and know all three commissioners working unified to fight OSHA through an organized way, through association work in counties, and through our state reps and state senators. We're not sitting here doing nothing.
Nobody's accusing you of that.
And we are working very hard on that, and you can look at our signatures of us signing onto those letters.
Right.
And so you say at one time, we need to do this, but if it doesn't work, get a hold of your state senator's rep. We've already been there and done that for a lot of months.
What good is it done?
What's that?
What good is it done?
What good is it?
OSHA's still breathing down, X, figure of us speaking. You've cultivated the political, and by the way, you used political before I did, and I'm not saying that's enough.
I'm a politician. I'm being...
I understand that, but I just, everyone's clear, you use the word political in politics. I understand that, but I just, everyone's clear, you used the word political in politics before I did. You, you mentioned, and you're probably correct, or more correct than incorrect, that you represent as a board local interest, business interests, other community health partners and so on.
We can try to balance all that.
All I'm here to represent is the forty-four or so people who are residents, some of which are business owners, some of which are the victim business managers, some of which have business in our bio. All I'm here is representing the people's names on the sheet. Those are residents. Yes, I think it's important to represent community partners and other interests that affect county tax rolls and so on. But it's a damn sight sure is important to represent these people equally or more so. That would be my response.
Appreciate it.
Anything else? I don't want to take up more time, cause your screens look full and he's been talking.
Any other comments, questions?
I appreciate all your time, and I appreciate the audience, cause I sucked up a little more than the fifteen minutes ago. Thanks a lot. Okay, good. Good deal. Good luck to y'all.
Alright, thanks, Jim.
Alright, so moving on with our agenda.
Dan?
He's alright.
On our agenda, Lake County Health Department Services. Just a second. Just a second. I did not give an opportunity for our public health director to respond, or if she would like to respond.
I wasn't given to that.
Yeah.
But I just, I'd like to acknowledge that you were here to build
He is incorrect. We've had a couple hospitalizations. Um, that would be the only thing I'd say. One, uh, because it was a Christmas Valley person, it went that way, not to us. And we had one here that was in our hospital that wasn't a Lake County. So they were then, when they could, as of yesterday, they were transferred out. So I've known of two people that have been hospitalized with COVID.
When did COVID start seeing county lines? If somebody has COVID, no matter, or they go to the hospital, it's still COVID. I'm sorry.
Well, then it makes sense that somebody in North went that way.
No, it's St. Charles.
And the person was here for whatever reason, so they came to ours.
And we could get into this.
Yeah.
I shouldn't get there, but the numbers aren't reflective of what's real in what's in our communities.
So we're fortunate, yeah.
It doesn't count towards our numbers, it's from another state or county. It's like, does COVID really see state and county lines?
Wherever you end up when you're tested.
So anyways, um.
That would be my
But the thing is, is that, playing the devil's advocate a little bit. Is it, is it an emergency?
That's above my pay grade. Thank you, boy.
My bad.
I, I don't wanna get into it, honestly.
Yeah, I mean, I did, I
I don't think it's appropriate to continue the conversation at, at this point. I feel like we've had a lot of discussion about this today. I really appreciate all the thoughts that have been brought forward, and I, and I think that I, I really appreciate the perspectives of my entire board. And being honest and forward about what are, what is on our hearts and what, what we're dealing with, because this has been a long process for all of us. One point that I would make clear on some of the public comment that was brought to us today, uh, or at least the comment from, uh, Mr. Strong. Was that there have been impacts to some of the county agencies, specifically public health, in terms of contact tracing and other things like that. I think you guys have been pushed to the absolute brink of the capacity.
Completely overwhelmed.
And so, I, that, that was the only thing that I felt like I was going to bring forward, but, um, as conversations progress, it's hard to interject those things. You wanna make sure that people in the public have the amount of time appropriate to bring these things forward. As I was pointing out, it's a long, long journey to come here, and I think that all these points and concerns and frustrations of our communities, we're all struggling. Uh, the mental health impacts to our community are real. And, um, so I, I wanna acknowledge that there's merit to everything that we've heard today. We're put into a tight spot of having to make a decision on things sometimes, and sometimes we shouldn't. But I, I just wanna say I appreciate all the perspectives of my board and all the things that we've all had to deal with in the public. Other than that, I really don't wanna get into the weeds on some of the other things talked about. Not, not at this point. I think maybe we should just take some time and think about some of it too.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Judy, thank you. I was only made you aware this was coming today and on the agenda. I know how busy you are, I appreciate you representing us well through, uh, the public health director.
That's okay. I just wanted to give, do I have a couple minutes? Give a, just do a quick update since I'm here. So we did get the BioNext Now, those are the, um, the tests that we can do for any outbreaks. I got quite, like, hundreds of them. Um, they're, they're good for outbreaks, symptomatic people, not non-symptomatic people. Um, so I have those, if ever we need those, through public health. Um, we are also going
What's it called?
BioNext Now.
BioNext, what, what is it?
It's a quick test, so it's a, it's a swab that goes in, kinda like a hemocult, uh, stool thing, fifteen minute, um, but works best on symptomatic people. We also are going to have a drive-up testing where anybody can be tested. Um, uh, the state's gonna come down and assist doing that. That looks like it'll probably be mid-November, I don't have a date yet. So as soon as I know more specifics, I'll give it to you guys.
So there are resources coming in from the state?
Yep, they're gonna come help test, um, and test anybody who wants to. I get a lot of negative feedback that we don't provide enough testing for people who just want to know. And this is an opportunity to have other employees come help me and, and provide that opportunity. Um, so that's gonna be coming up. Um, we had a total of fifteen positive tests now, since I believe, I wasn't quite prepared, I'm sorry you guys for this. Um, I think since ten fourteen, twenty-four, we've had fifteen positives. Thirteen have been in North Lake. Eleven were traced to a party. Two were firefighters of a group of, uh, twelve or thirteen firefighters, six of them that have tested positive, but they're in multiple states. We just happened to have two here. And two that are not traceable, have no idea where they got them. Um, and, um, what else was I gonna tell you? We, we are, I think, on this, we're gonna be put on the state watch list again, I'm not quite sure what that means. One thing that has happened is our nursing home and our, um, um, assisted living now, because of our numbers, has to test all their employees twice a week, and I think that's over sixty-seven employees. Um, so we have to do that until we're fourteen days, I think, below the ten percent. I'm not quite sure on that, she's, she's dealing with that, that's not in my realm. Um, and the most important thing that, for me, is we've tried really super hard to get school open and keep school open, and I want people to remember that. Um, if you have value with your students going to school, we still have to be cautious in order to keep the school open. And that's a priority in my world, because we do talk about students being isolated and at home and depressed, and we're getting them to school, and we want to maintain that. And we wanna be real cautious on what we do, knowing that that can go away, just like it has before. And, and, um, that's just kind of a priority of mine.
Thank you. One thing, Nana and I, I've talked to you a little bit, sit, put it in the email, so, um, the calls with the governor's office with the coroner. If we get put on the watch list, it triggers things. Being on the watch list isn't always bad, sometimes it is leverages things that become available to hospitals, public health, other things. So if we do get put on the watch list and we know of anything that we can leverage to help you or your staff, or the hospital. Let us know, and I'm generally on those conference calls with the governor's office. And it, it's not too neat to ask if we know what we're asking for and what we need.
Sure, sure.
Make sure, um, I, I wish we had a wealth of people to help you out.
Well, we're doing okay. Um, I say we're doing okay, we work hard and most days. Um, but I've been watching HARMY, and HARMY gives me a good idea of how much we can maybe take. And I think, and, and I just know from looking at numbers on the state site like everybody else, I haven't talked to them specifically. But it appears like maybe they had eleven cases in one day, it could be more. Um, because I get more after the, the numbers come out sometimes. But that had them pause, um, and I think they paused because of a public health perspective and, and possibly how much manpower it took to trace those. So that gives me a kind of a good idea. We've had six in a day and we can still do it. Um, so I, I'm thinking that number might be, it just, it's, it's a size comparable to ours, watching them um, and seeing kind of what made them slow, slow the town down a little bit to catch up. So as long as, so that's the number I'm holding on to, as long as it's under eleven, we'll keep going. Um, but we'll, we just have to, it just depends, like, the, the last groups we had, it was a party. And there's significant amount of people at the party that we have to contact trace in twenty-four hour period of time. We've made that happen, um, so far, and again, I think the most we've had in a day was six, and there's four of us that can, can do that. The problem is, there's four of us with four time, with full-time jobs, not COVID. So when we switch to just COVID, everything else stops, and, and that's the hardship. Yeah, but so far, so good.
Love your office.
Well, thank you, guys. If you have more specific questions, I'm happy to look into things for you and help in any way that I can. And, um, I feel his frustration, I understand where he's coming from. Um, we've all, some of us lived it a little longer and harder than eight months, and, um, at the end of the day, wanna go home and say I'm done. But unfortunately, that's not the jobs we signed up for, and so we keep our head down, keep moving. Yeah. Appreciate your time. Alright, you guys, have a good rest of your day. Good to see you, everybody.
Alright, so, Dan, thank you for sitting through. Lake County Health Department Services Monitoring Policy. You have two things, that's the first one I have on the agenda here.
Yeah, to recap from yesterday's discussion, uh, both of these policies are coming out of a state review of our public health department. And they have provided these templates that they want us to approve and then use as we monitor, um, subcontractors or recipients of federal and state flow-through dollars through our public health department. Um, like I said yesterday, though, the, there are, there are policies that, um, we will probably be using for other programs as well. So anytime we have federal dollars that we actually pass through to a sub-recipient that is in charge of programs and program delivery, we will use these policies for that.
I have no questions, I'm good. Just one question on, um, well, both of these, I, I understand we're just on the one. Has the health district been, are they aware that we're putting this policy in place?
You know, I have not had any conversations with them, I don't know if Judy has.
Okay.
Because they were involved in the review, they're providing the services as well, so I, I, I can't answer that question.
Okay. Well, maybe I will reach out to them as a community partner, making sure that they are aware, because we do have the contract with them, and then we are putting a policy in place with the health this, to monitor how the health district's doing their job as well. So I, I will reach out to the CEO.
Okay.
And, uh, make sure that he is aware that we are adopting this policy today.
Yeah, this policy is under our realm, because we're the public health authority, and so the public health authority follows it.
Yeah.
Right.
But we do need to, they're, we do need to be working with them, and we need to be aware that we're going to have.
It's likely that they have, they have these policies in place for their dollars that they
Absolutely.
pass down. So, so this is not uncommon, for sure, and it truly is finally probably formalizing something that we've done uh, in different ways, but.
It was close, it was close. I'll make a blessing anytime I can get there.
So I'll make a motion to accept the Lake County Health Department Services Monitoring Policy.
Seconded.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept the Lake County Health Department Service Monitoring Policy as presented. Any further discussion?
None.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries, the next one to the sub-recipient, sub-recipient monitoring policy.
The sub-recipient, um, monitoring policy, I'm fine with, um, as long as it's for Lake County and not Kuz.
Yes, I did, I did make that.
I think what I want is to say is that one.
Yeah.
I had, I read it again last night, but I was here rather late, because, you know, it was an interesting night, I'm sure all of us had an interesting night. And, uh, I was reading through it, and I, I again, saw no issues with it. I think Kuzkami did a really good job of putting it together, and, uh, really flushed out all the issues. But, um, I, and ultimately, I'm, I'm just really glad that we had some other counties that have kind of paved the way to where we could put this template in place.
Thanks.
No, I'm, I can help you.
What about motion?
I will make a motion to accept a sub-recipient monitoring policy for Lake County.
Seconded. Motion been made and seconded to accept and put into place a sub-recipient's recipient monitoring policy. That, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, aye, motion carries. Alright.
Thank you, Dan.
We are done with you, Dan, thank you so much for being patient. Uh, the next item, make sure I stay on time for our
Yeah.
Public hearing. Uh, next item is road vacation order. Do we want to jump around on this, and maybe we got a couple vehicle things that should go relief out? And then the other ones will have further discussion, just get them locked off here for the rest of the day. Okay, so let's jump down to, um, road department vehicle purchase, we had discussion about that yesterday. Road official, road master was on the phone. I see no issues, follow the process and procedures.
Yep.
So would entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we, uh, approve the purchase of two Dodge Ram pickups, uh, for a quote of forty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars each, at a total sum of ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Okay. Uh, motions been made and seconded to purchase of two vehicles from Dave Smith Dodge Ram, uh, at the price quoted. That was budgeted for, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. Uh, we also have a vehicle, a transport vehicle in quotes, brought forward, uh, for the sheriff's department. That was all brought forward, we had some discussion yesterday. There is the recommendation, uh, to go with the lowest quote after it went through the formal process. So would entertain a motion, unless there's questions. I'll make a motion to accept the bid on the transport vehicle for thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and eighty-three cents from Griffin Ford, pressure, pressure for.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the transport vehicle, uh, costing thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and eighty-three cents, uh, through the process, uh, low quote, keep pressure for. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Sheriff goes aye, motion carries, those are off, lift. Did you go aye, Jim?
Yes. Aye.
I'm sorry, you may ask. We still have some time. Land sale report, let's jump to, probably not in my head, is it, that one?
Action that's gonna be taken is just
That was just reported yesterday, so we got carried forward as action item. That was just, uh, update, we take action later on that. Alright, IGA with Harme County.
I emailed you guys yesterday, an update, uh, um, the numbers that we talked about, the dates. And, uh, sent it on to Harme County, and, and all the changes to the documents, so it's all stuff we discussed.
So you made, if I didn't look at it, I apologize, but under the section obligation of parties, you made that change?
I, uh, thirty-three hundred with the option for additional work on special projects approved by the board commissioners.
Awesome.
And then the date out to June of twenty, twenty-five. From that, everything else is, yeah, it was hard to fill that.
I'm ready for motion.
Ready.
Um, I'll, uh, make a motion to, uh, accept an intergovernmental agreement, uh, for the GIS system with Harme County.
Seconded.
Well, maybe seconded, uh, dinner, you're in there.
Second. Well, made and seconded, uh, inter- intergovernmental agreement for- Information System GIS between Lake County and Harney County. Uh, any further discussion? Thank you for adding that forward, that clarification. Any, any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have a hearing in seven minutes. Um, Amanda is here. Do we want? I was going to take a break, but out of consideration of her being here.
However you want. Whatever works best for you guys.
We could, we could probably knock it out. Yeah, okay.
I did, are you planning to stay in the whole meeting or just the one item?
No, I would go afterwards.
Okay, so.
So we can get rid of Amanda, basically, yes, that's a-
That would make it a lot easier for you.
Let's do that. No, I'm just kidding.
Make everybody's life easier, right?
I was trying to be, uh, considerate of time for you. Um-
That's okay. James, let's not argue guys.
So yesterday, um, one thing that seemed to be the consensus of the board and it's brought forward to the consideration of forming advisory committee. Um, so, um, Mark, you've done some work on that. I, I have a few different comments, but I want to know where you're at on it.
On the committee?
Um, what, what you're, what you're thinking and so you were definitely-
We only have a committee on the agenda for discussion today, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Because there were two items that were brought forward us.
There were two items.
But we, we were only going to be discussing the committee. And we're continuing to follow up and go back and forth with legal counsel, I believe, on the other matter, correct?
On, on the request.
And did you guys, and did you guys get my two emails regarding that?
I did.
So, all right, so.
So, so then, Chair.
Yes, yeah, so I, I would just put one forward. So I, I guess maybe we could possibly put one to not to bed, but to sleep or suck it early. Um, asking for moratorium. We've had some legal counsel, uh, interaction and everything. That warrants a lot more in-depth discussion and research.
And our legal counsel hasn't had time to research.
Right. So that does take some, now, on the email I sent to you guys last night, there were two emails. One was strictly on moratorium stuff. There were, and I'm pulling them up now, otherwise I'll totally just space again. Um, let's see. Okay. So the three counties that I have for Oregon where there's information on it are Ogal County, I'm not pronouncing that wrong, Yamhill and Marion. And then there was another one in, for Shelby County. I do not know what state that was. Um, and then one in Indiana.
Yeah, I don't think Ogal was county. There's the first.
Oh, really? Because it looked like, it was like, when I was reading on it, it looked like they were talking about Oregon.
Oh, maybe.
So I don't know.
Maybe there were a quarter in county. Well, anyway.
Anyway, but just to give you guys, there is some precedent. It's been done before. Um,
Yep, and I'll forward that on to legal counsel.
Public health. Yeah.
All right. So let's, let's act on what was on the agenda.
Okay.
Um, and then I'll, on the discussion part, I'll give some information.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that we start, uh, an advisory committee for solar. Um, and to work on solar procedures and that sort of thing for the county.
I'll second that motion discussion.
Motion even made and seconded, uh, form a committee, uh, on solar and that's further discussion. That is where I've been trying to figure out what we and our procedure should be. And we, we do have a policy on committees. We're not forming them, but committees. So there's an application process that we're pointing people to, I think, appropriate following policy. My thing is, is I'm all for a committee, a hundred percent supportive of this. We as a board need to have some depth conversation amongst us in a work session of the goals that that committee are going to be working on. If we go general with solar, there's going to be a whole bunch of different opinions and things and things to bring up that maybe that is not the direction as part of the advisory committee we want the finding director and that committee to be working on. And so I'm, I'm assuming Commissioner Albertina would probably be the commissioner set on there. You need to have the board that we often work on basic views of the kind of guideline sideboards of what we're really asking for. And, and it's not to slow anything down or stop anything. It's for it to be productive for the people that are going to be on that.
The educational purpose.
Yeah, and so last night, as I got emails and different things, sort of two different things, but I'm thinking, okay, our role to make sure if we form advisory committee and have volunteers to sit on this advisory committee, they need to, their time needs to be well spent. And we probably should go that through the application process. So we don't accidentally leave somebody out. That would be a really good one, I think. I think when you set up the committee representation of all these different, the best we can, from county to finding commissioner, whatever, that there may be more than one person that's wanting to be there. And so it's a procedural thing that I sort of got caught up with. I just wanted that to be here in discussion. I'm all, I can, I can go with motion, go with forming the committee with the caveat that we bring it into what the board is going to ask that committee. I'm totally fine. So, so do you want me to, uh, do that? Well, um, I, I opened it for a discussion because you have no idea what my discussion was. Because I, my, my problem is that I assumed that's what the committee was for. Well, um-
But like you were saying, you know, having the guide rails and everything else in place to give purpose to the committee so that they know exactly what they are being formed for, not, not to just form a copy group.
Right, as long as it's a general committee on what do we want, but what are, but you needed, say, we're looking for specifics on these sort of parameters.
So Commissioner Robertson, your comment yesterday is what triggered mine. Is when you asked the group that was before us yesterday. That wasn't representative of all people that should be, but your comment was, you're talking only high-value farm ground that is irrigated. And you never even got a complete answer. And so the committee, what are they going to work on? Are they going to work on high-value farm ground, irrigated farm ground? Lot sizes of solar, commercial grade, on and on. And so if you're the latest commissioner, you need the sideboards and the support from the board to the finding commission of this is our goal, this is what we want. It'll go down some different rabbit holes. But then that sort of helps everybody involved in it. And I, I took it off, basically, your lead yesterday of you trying to figure out what was the group before us yesterday's main goal? And, and I'm not sure you got a complete answer.
I, I think there was a consensus that they didn't want anything on irrigated farm.
But anyways. Let, let me, uh, Kenny LaPlante, did you just join us on the phone? Sorry.
Yes, sir, Mr. Winter's idea.
Okay, so I haven't opened the hearing yet. Um, it's stage for eleven o'clock. I have to, we're going to run this a couple of minutes late and I'll open the hearing soon. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I, I definitely want the sideboards. I don't, we all have work we have to do and I don't want it rabbit trailing and you guys know how that drives me nuts anyways. So, um, so how do you want it?
Just maybe just having it approved of, we have to have a follow-up work session to determine what those things are before we appoint people to do what.
Well, and I, I think-
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I think, um, forming the committee basically is the solar review committee or how, however you view that it. Um, to do that, to be determined of the goals and expectations that committee have included. There's an application process. So we just, just for the record, since, no, no, it's not here, I would like to have that added to our next work session when we can discuss those during it. I, I think that's, I think that's a- So, so we keep this rule on and it doesn't? Absolutely. After the same time. So do we start a motion on the table? I, I'm comfortable going, uh, because we're, we're forming the committee. But we have not figured the, the goals and the parameters that define that we're saying that we're going to form a committee. Maybe this is the, uh, bracket. Are you guys comfortable with that?
Can we do it, um, can we do it a little bit sooner than two weeks?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So we have, our, our next session, we, a, a work session to be determined. So, so, yeah, yeah. And I'm going to look over at the finding director. That is a key part of this because generally a lot of the, if it gets down to ordinance or if it gets down to just policies and everything, it's, it opens up a lot of chat and learns and, uh, we need to know are the directors' time to be, going to be quite involved in this because that's our resource for the rest of the law.
Absolutely. And, uh, work session for us to talk about this and I think we should.
It should be available anytime. It's Tuesday at three o'clock.
So, and, 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 okay. So, so a suggestion or a thought is you could meet with Darwin, or their finding commission as an individual commissioner, and figure out some goals our sideboards set. People in that expertise might think that we need to look at. And then that would foster our discussion when you have a special session with the board. Or, and plus you guys can, anything else that you guys want to make sure is on there? Can, so, that's fine. So this is, this is still part of the discussion or? This is part of the discussion. I can call for the question or the vote. Uh, Mr. Bailey, uh, that's pretty generic, motion and second, but it, uh, with the discussion, it sets, uh, in place, that we're going to do further work before the committee is completely formed. Are we within our parameters?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, so.